I'd like to welcome everybody to the St. Charles County Council Meeting of July 29, 2019. We'll begin our meeting with invocation, which will be led by Mike Elam and the pledge led by Joel Brazel. Everybody please rise.
Let's fire our heads and pray. Father God, we just want to pause for a few minutes and thank you for the blessings that you give upon us, and we ask for your wisdom upon this meeting. In hearing some events tonight, we just want to thank you for the first responders and their heroism and how they run into places that other people would want to run away from. So, we thank you for them tonight, we pray for their safety, and we ask that your will would be done. We thank you for this meeting tonight, the opportunity that we have to gather in a free country and have an open dialogue and talk about these issues, and we just pray that you'll lead us to the place that you want us to go. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a roll call again?
Councilman Cronin, Councilman Brazel, Councilman Elam, Councilman White, Councilman Hammond, Councilman Hollander, Councilman Klinghammer.
Here.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a public presentation, recognition of Judge Philip Olms for receiving a national award.
All rise.
Absolutely not. Thank you very much.
Judge, how are you?
I'm very good.
I'm going to read this proclamation.
Thank you.
I'll give you a chance to say a few words if you'd like. But whereas St. Charles County government has the privilege of recognizing individuals for their accomplishments and outstanding contributions to the community in promoting the welfare of their fellow citizens, and whereas one such individual is the Honorable Philip Olms, Judge of the 11th Judicial Circuit, who has overseen the Adult DWI co-occurring family and veterans treatment courts in St. Charles County since August of 2000, and whereas on July 14, 2019, Judge Olms received the Juvenile and Family Treatment Court Leadership Award at the National Association of Drug Court Professionals Annual Conference in Washington, DC, and whereas Judge Olms is the first to receive this national award, recognizing an individual demonstrating exemplary service in the treatment court field, noting that Judge Olms has been a pioneer and a leader throughout his years of service. And whereas, since 2013, Judge Olms' adult court has been one of only eight in the nation selected as a mentor court, where court staff from around the United States come to observe how to operate a successful treatment court, and whereas local partnering agencies and officials who work closely with the 11th Judicial Circuit Treatment Courts have praised Judge Olms for his leadership and exceptional service in providing participants an alternative to incarceration through a path to becoming productive, healthy citizens, and for the positive and far-reaching impact these programs also provide to the overall community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by Steve Elman, St. Charles County Executive, congratulate Judge Philip Olms as a 2019 recipient of the National Association of Drug Court Professionals Juvenile and Family Treatment Court Leadership Award.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Thank you. You're closer. I just have, you know, I love history. I have a history question. Judge Olms, how was he related to you?
He would have been my grandfather's brother.
Your grandfather's brother. His picture's out here on the wall. He was a county-
That was Henry, 1930.
Yeah, he was a county court judge for like 25 years.
Yeah.
During the 1930s, he was the only Republican that was elected.
That's right.
So, my point, ladies and gentlemen, is Phil comes from a family who's been public servants for many, many generations, and I'd love to get your kids involved.
But I gotta get them back in the county.
Gotta get them back in the county.
Yeah.
But Judge, again, thank you for all you do, and proud to have served with you in the court, and very proud to call you a friend.
Thank you, and I appreciate it. It means a lot. And I know we have a busy meeting, but anyone takes an opportunity, and I'll be extremely brief. I hope no one here believes I am so naive or conceited as to think I'm entitled to this by my efforts alone. In the 19 years we've done treatment court, we have been remarkably successful, but that has been primarily because everyone involved, from court personnel, to the bailiffs, to county deputies, the prosecuting attorneys who've been specifically assigned there, all of these people have volunteered to work in this program because they want to innovate, they want to try something new, they know that we are going to demand more of their time, and that there's going to be more responsibility and work involved with this. They agreed to do it at no additional pay. Their hard work is what made this possible, but to be honest, I like it in credit for their hard work. So, thank you so much for this, but it will be shared with everyone who's worked on this program. And very briefly, the county, through the 19 years we've done this, we've had opportunities to ask the county to work with us. Every reasonable request has been met immediately, and our unreasonable requests are considered before they tell us they can only do part of it. And that's the cooperation we have that's made this all possible. Thank you so much for this. It is greatly appreciated.
Thank you so much, Judge, for your service. I'd like to thank you for your hard work. I know a family that their son went through that program. He was in a lot of trouble, and this couple of years ago, he got straightened out, and he's doing very well today.
Good deal. Very good. Moving on to the next thing on our agenda is the public comments. This is a time where anybody can come before the council and discuss any topic, but once a topic has been arrived at, then we allow three speakers pro and three speakers con, and we ask that the speakers, please limit their time to three minutes. Do we have any speakers?
Leslie Limberg.
You don't have to be sworn in.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for your service. My name is Leslie Limberg. I've been a resident in the county for 20 years. I've been a volunteer with the county parks since 2004. I'm currently on stream team number 3612 with the Missouri Department of Conservation. I just want to briefly talk about water tonight. As I drove here with the rooster tales at all heights on Highway 70 at Mid Rivers Mall Drive, it just further established in my mind the necessity to speak about water tonight. There is a brand, there is a park not yet open on Stub Road just south of Highway F. This is the Daniel Boone Hayes property. There's a brand-new bridge there, and in the last two years, we've noticed a cutaway working its way, eroding the soil on the right side of the bridge, and I'm sure the parks knows all about this. I want to bring it to your attention that our stream team, by the way, received an award for our water quality data collection just last month. So, I know a thing or two about water, and I just want to say that this cutback is now seriously threatening the bridge. The flow of water is too much where a small creek meets the Fameosage. It is eroding the soil next to the bridge, and unfortunately, the property's owned by a gentleman, a private landowner, who knows nothing about erosion control. There's a second bridge in our brand-new Bromley Sett Park, just up the street from my house. There's an erosion cut, again, that threatens the bridge just downhill from Betty's Pavilion. Fortunately, the staff has dumped three loads of soil there, so hopefully, with enough trees in there and undergrowth, it'll stay put. Had there been trees and undergrowth there along the road with compacted soil, the erosion would not be such a problem. The recent effort to build a road on a hill has forced rainwater to converge between the road and the hill, carving out a faster path downhill. Just last week, our New Melly rain gauge had two inches of rain. Last night was another three-quarters of an inch. That's my signal to stop, I suppose. Let me finish by saying it's not just Eureka and the Portage du Sou, it's in the Weldon Woods area that's getting unprecedented rain. Let me just lastly say that bulldozers on the cliff will forever cause flood-like water to pour downhill, eroding already exposed soil, and water moves faster the higher the grade. Please reconsider the Weldon Woods subdivision project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori Gianini.
How are you? I haven't been here for a while. I'm going to talk about Greens Bottom Road again. There still, every time it rains, water comes down, the ditch that was put in there to take care of the drainage doesn't work. Comes across the road, it comes right into my yard, and now I have another lake. I just got rid of the lake the floodwaters left. Now I have another one because of the runoff. Still have not seen anybody down there to take care of any type of mosquito problems that we have. I mean, all they gotta do is come through with one of the trucks. I know you guys have them. And to spray. Still hasn't happened. You walk out the door and you get attacked. I mean, it's awful. But where they have put that drainage ditch, and with all the concrete blocks that they put in there to keep people from running through it when it was a mud puddle, it doesn't do anything. Now I have cattails growing there instead of anything else, because there's so much water, it allows those to grow. All I want you guys to do is come down and take care of the mess that was made when they raised the road. The grading did not work, they did not do it properly, and now we have standing water constantly, constantly, in those ditches. That's all I want, is for somebody to take care of the problem that was made by when you had the road done. Instead of spending the money down on the other end to resurface, come fix the problems that were made to begin with. Quit wasting more money on the road until you fix the problems that are there, because it's going to start eroding away the edges of that road, and we're going to have bigger problems. And I'm tired of the water in my road, in my yard. I'm tired of it. I can't even mow in that part of my grass because there's so much landing water all the time, from what comes down the hill and across Katy Trail, into my yard instead of into the ditch, because it can't handle it. That's it.
All right. Thank you.
Arnie Deanoff.
Thank you very much, members of the county council. My name is Arnie C. A.C. Deanoff, public advocate and resident. First thing I'd like to talk about, which you probably talked about, you talked about in closed session in the back room, is the potential land purchase from the University of Missouri Board of Curators. This is involving Missouri Research Park and the very controversial Katy Trail and the Whittaker tract, or the Whittaker Building of Homes, that will destroy this for our heritage, for our county, and for future generations. Now, it's 368 acres. Let's get that land contract deal done. Let's stop messing around, let's stop dilly-dallying, let's get it done for our 440,000 residents. Let's get the negotiations done. Let's do it for the enjoyment of us, the citizens, our 440,000-strong, good citizens that deserve this for the preservation of our parkland. Let's preserve our heritage. The property was sold to the university for $1. The president of the university and the Board of Curators should make it available and stay in the public domain. Let's not let Whittaker get this property, but let's bring it back home to the enjoyment of the residents. Second thing I'd be in support of is the park recreation for the boat paddle system, the rental of kiosks up at the park along the Missouri River, and also for the expansion of New Melly's Lakes Park for weddings and functions. I think that's a good use of our taxpayer dollar. Just backing up to Missouri Research Park, we have a ton of money in our reserves that's paid for by a use tax on the internet. So, don't be shy of the money. It's there, it's available, and you can make that purchase and that deal happen. The next thing is the road and traffic, the Gateway Greenlight Phase 5. In my opinion, $613,000 on an already $10 million spent in the last six, seven years. This is the biggest waste and pork belly project that I have seen in our county. We tout ourselves, and Steve Elman touts themselves as conservative, but yet we're milking the federal and state governments for this project in terms of grant. This green light gateway program has led to longer traffic delays, especially in the O'Fallon and the Wentzville areas, and harsher traffic congestion. I ask that you put a stop to this waste of our taxpayer dollars and stop wasting our federal, state, and local road board funds on something that just isn't working. On bill number 4743, deals with American Marijuana, Medical Marijuana Regulations, establishing medical marijuana land use and safety regulations. I ask that there be a 5,000-foot buffer from any sales, cultivation, distribution, or packaging facility dealing with marijuana. The 1,500 just isn't enough, and I think there needs to be some more security barriers and security elements put into this ordinance. And finally, Mr. Chairman, I'll wrap it up. The county executive building here needs some attention, tender love and care. There's trash on the ground, sidewalk deterioration, tree trimming that needs to be done, there's limbs in the walkway when you try to enjoy this property, there's weeds, there's cutting that are, the grass cutting is horrible that we do under a contract. And finally, we need some more landscaping and some more flowers on this property. We need to respect this property and our heritage, especially since it's a statue of several of our former military, of former wars, and I'd like to talk to the facility director and make sure that we respect this building and its property. Thank you.
Next speaker.
That was the final speaker.
Okay. Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is the oral report by County Executive Elman.
To be there, actually, can change. Yeah. Okay. Members of the council, I have just a short report. I want to share with you some numbers that the assessor has shared with me. If you remember, six years ago, I think we did this the first time, and we looked at property values in St. Charles County, how much they'd gone up over the two-year period. We looked at it by city, we looked at it in the north of the county and the south of the county, we looked at it a whole lot of different ways. Two years later, I was able to come back and report that really things still look really good, don't see any trends that should cause alarm, and now I'm back again to tell you that we've got the latest numbers, and it still looks very good. Remember when we did this, I talked about extending the Delmar Divide, and the point I was trying to make is whereas in the city of St. Louis, it's unbelievable difference between North City and Central West End, that same sort of trend was started, was happening in St. Louis County, not quite as bad. So, I wanted to see whether it was happening out here. And six years ago, I told you it wasn't, or excuse me, four years ago, two years ago, I told you it still wasn't, and I can tell you now it still is not. And this is the kind of numbers that we've been looking at here. And if you see, you can see at the bottom, the city of St. Louis, north of Delmar is like $12.82 a square foot. That's the value. And, you know, nine times that on the other side. In St. Louis County, it's a little more than two to one, and in St. Charles County, as it has been, it's about $1.50 a cent square foot difference. So, we don't have, unlike St. Louis County, we don't have people north of that line having their property values diminish while people south of the line are enjoying growth. And of course, the other thing that we looked at is breaking it down by city, city by city. And you can see here that the, again, when you compare the north, the northeast section and the southwest section, it's 11.5 versus 11.6. There's almost no difference. And then, I think even more important, when you look at it city by city, everybody's between, what, 10-point, the major cities are between 10.28 and 14.13. So, they're all, they're all doing well, some are doing a little better than others. Now, Cotville and Darden Prairie, you see, are low, but two years ago, when we looked at this, they were extremely high. And if you look at the average over the four-year period, they're about the same, between 10 and 12. So, all of that, I think, is good news. This just shows you where that line goes in terms of southwest versus northeast. Crime rates continue to be low, especially compared to St. Louis City and Ferguson. But again, as I've pointed out over the years, the important thing for St. Charles County, yes, we have crime, but we don't have it all in one place. We have, we have it spread around, we have cities that are large enough to have professional police departments, and each one of those police departments has a part of the problem. Cities that aren't yet big enough to have a professional police department are smart enough to contract with us, unlike the situation we have in St. Louis County in some areas. So, again, it's good news. Free and reduced lunch count, again, this is an indication of where low-income people may live in the county, and you can see that in the past, St. Charles had the highest number. It actually has 4% less now. I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's because, I don't know if that's because the economy's been good and people have gotten jobs and are no longer on the free and reduced lunch program, but the good news is we don't see a large increase in the number of free and reduced lunch. And again, St. Charles has more than the rest because it has older housing, but the other, the other districts are pretty much all about the same. And again, as a former teacher, I will tell you that, you know, when I was a teacher, we had 10% or 15% of the kids in a school that were on free and reduced lunch, and to the extent that those kids had more problems and needed more assistance, there was plenty of resources to go around, and nobody really even knew who they are. What we don't want to have, I think, in this county is ever get to the point where that 20% or 38% becomes 60% or 68% or 80%, because when we, when you have that, then the schools just get overwhelmed. But again, we have five districts. Every one of them have very nice neighborhoods with very well-to-do constituents, and all five of our districts have low-income areas where those kids may have additional problems. Owner occupancy, again, this is, this is a strength, I think we all know. As long as we can keep the owner occupancy rate high, people are going to take better care of their property. And you look at the number of rental units, again, St. Charles has the most, again, because it has the oldest. But if you look at the rest, they're all pretty much, they're all pretty much about the same. And there, you can look at the occupancy rate in the, in the county as a whole, it's 80% and unincorporated, it's 78%. Darden Prairie, 95.1, I think, is the highest. And, okay, this is school district attendance, that's fine, that's not a new number. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them. If you want to talk about this further, let me know. If any of you want to use this information to make a presentation to people in your district, it's certainly available, and I think it's, I think it's good news right now. We're growing, and everybody's growing. It's not just certain parts of the county. Thank you.
Good news.
Thank you.
Thank you, county. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there anybody that wish to approve the consent agenda?
Looking for approval, let's move it.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda has been approved, and we move on to bills for final passage, starting with bill 4740.
Bill number 4740, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A agricultural district to R22 family residential district as per application RZ19-05.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none?
Bill number 4740, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A agricultural district to R22 family residential district as per application RZ19-05. Councilman Cronin, Councilman Brazel, Councilman Elam, Councilman White, Councilman Hammond, Councilman Hollander, Councilman Klinghammer.
Yes.
Bill number 4740 has been approved, and we move to bill 4741.
Bill number 4741, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from R1A single-family residential district to R1C single-family residential district as per application RZ19-06.
Are there any questions or comments on 4741? Seeing none, read the tally and call a roll.
Bill number 4741, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from R1A single-family residential district to R1C single-family residential district as per application RZ19-06. Councilman Brazel, Councilman Elam, Councilman White, Councilman Hammond, Councilman Hollander, Councilman Klinghammer, Councilman Cronin.
Bill 4741 has been approved, and we move to 4742.
Bill number 4742, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute the congestion mitigation and air quality, CMAQ agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to grant the use of funds to add ramps between Missouri 364 West and Heritage Crossing Federal Project CMAQ-7302679 for the reimbursement of up to 50% of the eligible costs not to exceed a maximum of $1,404,000.
Any questions or comments on bill 4742? Seeing none?
Bill number 4742, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute the congestion mitigation and air quality, CMAQ agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to grant the use of funds to add ramps between Missouri 364 West and Heritage Crossing Federal Project CMAQ-7302679 for the reimbursement of up to 50% of the eligible costs not to exceed a maximum of $1,404,000. Councilman Elam, Councilman White, Councilman Hammond, Councilman Hollander, Councilman Klinghammer, Councilman Cronin, Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Bill 4743 has been passed, and we move on to bill 4744.
Bill number 4743, an ordinance creating a new chapter 277 Medical Marijuana Regulations in the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCMO, and amending certain sections of Chapter 405, OSCMO, Unified Development Ordinance of St. Charles County, Missouri, zoning regulations in order to establish medical marijuana land use and safety regulations.
Is there a motion to?
I've got a question.
Yes. There, we have a substitute bill to bring forward.
We can introduce the substitute. The question is, I can wait until after that's done.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to introduce substitute bill 4743.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're on 4743, substitute bill.
And I'll read it. Bill number 4743, an ordinance creating a new chapter 277 Medical Marijuana Regulations in the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCMO, and amending certain sections of Chapter 405, OSCMO, Unified Development Ordinance of St. Charles County, Missouri, zoning regulations in order to establish medical marijuana land use and safety regulations.
Okay, see, I kind of skipped over this because I didn't want to talk about. Any questions or comments?
I have questions and comments. John?
Mike, Mike first.
My first.
Go ahead.
If you don't mind. I don't know who's here to talk about it. Are you fielding the questions, or?
Yeah, direct them to me, and as you all know, from the work session, Holly Magg-Josh has worked the details of this from the get, from the time Amendment Two passed, so.
Okay. The concern I have, and I know it's there somewhere, but when we're talking about cultivation, what, if you could give us a brief synopsis of that, and how specifically, what size lot does it need to be on, how, and the distance from a resident?
In the substitute, it's two thousand feet. Holly, I'll defer to you if you want to add some other texture to it.
As you all had requested, the cultivation is now the conditional use within the agricultural district, and that foot requirement was increased to two thousand feet. That's on page forty-eight, and it also specifies that that is measured from the property line of the facilities.
Property line of the facility to, okay, so if there's a house and a, and an agricultural zoning, is that two thousand feet to that house, to what, or to their property line? It gets, when you're, when you're out in the country, it gets, things, distance get a little, a little confusing, when you go to their property, to the property line of the, of that house, or, or to the structure itself?
Yes. In the case of a freestanding cultivation facility, then it is from the property line of the facility to the closest point of the property line. And that applies both to any land that's zoned residential, or any land that's being used residentially. So for example, a home, if in A agriculture, that would still be property line to property line.
Okay. Did we put anything in about greenhouses and odor control for those, for those greenhouses?
For any type of facility, there is a provision.
I'm running reference on page twenty-four, but I thought that was just to the dispensaries. I might, did I read that wrong?
On page twenty-four.
Paragraph twenty-two. Or is that the part that talked about the conditional use?
It is on page seventeen of the substitute bill on odor and nuisance, and that is for all the facilities and activities within the facility, so it applies to all five, including dispensaries, cultivation facilities, any of that, and states that no facility or the activities within it shall emit an odor beyond the boundaries of the property on which it's located, or in any way cause a nuisance as set forth in our general nuisance sections of the ordinance.
Okay, good, that addresses one of the concerns that I've heard from some other people, in the state of Washington in particular. One gentleman was informed me that he had a fifteen thousand square foot greenhouse, which is big, but not giant, I mean, it's not enormous, and they had odor problems for two, two-mile circumference around it. So I, hopefully, if there's, we're going to allow this at all, there's scrubbers or whatever they can put on their, their filtration system, or air filters that will prevent that. But he described in no uncertain terms that the odor was absolutely horrendous, of a skunk that got run over and left in the July sun for, for two or three days. So I guess I do call it skunk weed for, for a reason. So I just wanted to make sure that we were taking precautions on the grow side as well. And I had kind of ignored the grow side a little bit before, but I found out that this stuff really does stink, and it's growing, while it's growing and while they're harvesting it.
I think it also applies probably more to the dispensaries, but that same provision also states explicitly that if there's a dispensary facility in a building with other tenants, or a strip mall, something like that, that those same requirements, that the facility not emit an odor detectable outside the space leased by the dispensary facility. So that's included too, even if it's tenants in a building, or someone, you know, right next door.
What kind of teeth do we have, let's just hypothetically say that, that there is a stinky situation going on. What, what kind of teeth do we have to actually do something about it?
That starts on page seventeen, and any person who violates any of these provisions, including the odor nuisance provisions, is subject to a fine of up to a thousand dollars, and each day constitutes a separate offense. If there are, the county also has the ability to pursue injunctions, or abatements, anything like that. In addition, there are provisions that if they are not providing by, or not abiding by the other requirements for their license, then there are also procedures to revoke or suspend their license, either by the county, and then the state has similar procedures.
Thank you.
All right, any questions?
I have a couple of questions. There is a gentleman in the audience who came in behalf to speak about some of this, and he didn't get his name on it, so I do have some questions for Mr. Silverman. You want to come up here, please?
Thank you.
You had pointed out, you can get behind my, about the concern that I know you have is on page forty-eight, number five, talking about swimming pools, reservoirs, athletic fields, basketball, tennis courts, bicycle paths, walking paths, wilderness areas. What was your, what was your opinion on that?
Yeah, so we, the applications are basically due in another week. So we have business owners, especially small business owners, who have tried purchasing land, have put options out for, you know, cultivation facilities and things of that nature. And what has happened is, because of this, they have, they have purchased land, or had those options to purchase land that are near these trails. And that is putting them at risk of, of having to either relocate at a very short amount of time, and could put some small businesses in a, in a very harsh bind.
Mr. Watson, on to, with the state law on Amendment Two, it was pointed out to me that the, that element that schools, education facility, and churches are only covered by those restrictions, so I just want to make sure, do we have to be concerned about adding this language with, because walking trails and bicycle trails, could, that could be sidewalks, I mean, how, is this, is this an overstep with the state law? Is the, the perspective that the person reaching out to me pointed out?
Holly can address as well. I know, I think Amendment Two is seven hundred and fifty feet on a lot of those as well, but I, and there are more incorporated in, but Holly, why don't you go ahead and address
Yes, Amendment Two provides seven hundred and fifty feet. These provisions would be, this would be within the thousand feet for other type facilities other than the cultivation or two thousand, or, sorry, a thousand feet for those facilities. And in number five, it's limited to public parks that include activities like the walking trails, or biking trails, things like that. So just having, you know, a walking trail would not necessarily put you into that category unless it's a public park with those sorts of activities. And that was just an illustrative list of the sorts of things in that public park restriction.
Is this what everyone else is doing, or is this, is this new, this, this portion of it? John, Dean, or Holly, or whoever, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I would say that on balance, this, a lot of these are very tailored similarly. I just don't know specifically about this one provision.
I've got Mike's chart, city of St. Charles included, public parks, as did Lake St. Louis, and those two. St. Charles and Lake St. Louis have included public parks. O'Fallon, St. Peters, Wentzville have not.
The only thing I'm concerned with is the, the perspective that if the small businesses have followed all the state regs and did what they had to do, and they actually got theirself into this with some major investment, and this is, this is something that, that is somewhat outside the scope of the state law. It concerns me that we're being over-restrictive, which, in this particular, I, I don't think I recognized this part last night about walking trails and parks. And we, we talked about the cultivating, we talked about the, the other items, but we did not talk about this specifically. And this extremely broadens the restriction. Whether or not you're in favor of it or not, I mean, sixty-seven percent of voters in the state pass this, so it's not like we can try to prohibit it from happening. So is this a reasonable, is number five a reasonable restriction? I'm just.
I don't see it that way. I see that these people that are investing in this, in this endeavor should have waited till everything was completed before they, you know, invested their money, to see where, where, what the rules and regulations were finally going to be.
But.
Certain timeframe is that they had to get turned in also.
I mean, they were trying to do everything. I just, I mean, it was brought to my attention by Mr. Silverman, I'm just bringing it up. I mean, you could ask him questions, but I just feel that, as a business owner myself, I, I'm not a fan, I don't smoke pot, I never have, I mean, I, it's not a fan of this whole thing, but it's something that we have to do, if we're following with the, the request of the people. I just don't want to be overly burdened on, you know, the, the people who are going through the process of following the law.
I just want to make sure I understand correctly. We're adding two hundred and fifty feet onto the, onto the state's seven hundred and fifty feet.
No, I'm talking about number five, just that, that, that particular paragraph. I mean, is that something that, I mean, I would.
By keeping them away from the?
Well, trails is a, we have trails all over this county. I mean, Katy Trail, we have bicycle trails, Greenway Trails.
I know, but I think what Holly told us was that it was in regards to a park. Not, not just a, not just a trail, I mean, we got this Greenway report that came out. We get, you're right, we do have trails all over the place, but they're not part of, they're not contained within a park. Except for the Katy Trail, which I guess is a state park.
It is a park, a state park.
Yeah.
So the language of five says that it's a public park which has been designated for park or recreational activities, including but not limited to park, playground, nature trails, swimming pool, reservoir, athletic field, basketball or tennis courts, pedestrian bicycle paths, wilderness areas, or other similar public land within the county. So I would say that public park is the category, and then those others are just examples of things that would be activities within public parks. But it being not within a park, or not within similar public land within the county, would mean that that restriction is not going to apply. So for example, a, you know, a different, a.
Not just any playground or swimming pool.
Correct.
It would have to be a playground or a swimming pool in a public park.
Correct.
Just. Is that, Mr. Silverman, do you understand, Mr. Silverman?
Yeah, yes.
You could come up.
Thank you.
I guess the one concern that I have is, I mean, like, like it's been stated, there's parks, there's trails, so every, with regards to five, every trail that we're talking about has to be in a, in a state park.
In a public park.
In a pub, pardon me, in a public park.
Correct.
Okay. I just, my, my concern is that these business owners that are, I mean, they've spent months and months on these applications, and we're, we're a week out. I guess what we'd be asking is to, to maybe reconsider this, and, and give it a little bit more time. And we are, I think the seventeenth is the last day that people can submit these, and small, the small business owners are going to suffer from this.
How many?
I, I can't give, I couldn't be able to tell you how many people have applied for licenses in this area. I, I don't know that statistic.
Well, so the licenses will be granted this month, is that what you're saying?
Licenses will, are expected to be granted on December thirty-first.
Oh, December thirty-first.
Yeah, but they have to be. Yes.
I see. Does it matter, John, is it, is it of any relevance if we table this until the next meeting, to have any conversation on the folks who are reaching out to us that are saying that this is problematic for the effort they already exhausted?
Yeah, let me defer to Mike on that, because I know that community development has been getting some calls. I know that they've had a dozen or more calls, and, and right now, we don't have, I don't have a good feel of who's, who's moving, because they're going to start taking applications August third, and I'm not sure who is in the queue to submit on the first day. I don't think we have a way to know that right now, because right now, they're just inquiring about what this is going to look like, and I don't know if they're waiting for tonight's effort to then finalize their application, be ready to go on the third or not. Mike, I don't know if you have a better feel for that than I do.
So we have been fielding calls, but we have no pending applications, nobody's waiting in the wings that we're aware of to submit applications for, for zoning confirmation, zoning approval. So I, you know, I just know next, next agenda is going to be pretty full. That's my only suggestion to.
Yeah, I was under the impression that the reason that, that the timetable was set up the way it was set up is so that we would have this ordinance in place by August the third, when these people are then going to be able to start submitting their applications. That, that, that was my original thought, right? The timetable was set up in that, in that way, so that they would know what our ordinance says before they submit their applications.
I know, I'm sorry.
I just, one comment, I, I hate to see us do an overkill, because I guess we're fortunate in this county, we don't have more hog farmers, because I can remember the time when St. Peters was growing, there was a hog farm out near Med Rivers, and you couldn't stand it out there in the evening, or when he spread his manure. And I, I don't know that a lot of people are even going to use the medical marijuana facilities, when we got a state that's getting ready to have recreational marijuana available after January first in Illinois. So is somebody going to go to the doctor and get a prescription, or are they going to go to Illinois and get their, their medication, so?
I, I would either like to either remove five for now, and we could always add it, or we could table it, because, here's the only thing I'm concerned about, is for the people who went through the effort, and they put their hard money into it, and worked very hard at getting, following the law, I would hate to hurt someone financially on a decision that we don't really know that much about, because I don't know that much about this.
Joe, we want to get on the same page that you are. What, you're, you're referencing number five.
Page forty-eight.
It's the one that says a public park is where you, you have to be a thousand feet from a public park, basically.
Seven fifty, isn't it seven fifty?
No, ours is a thousand, correct, Holly? Yeah, it's a thousand.
Amendment Two was seven fifty in that zone.
Yeah, so we went from seven fifty to a thousand.
In this, in this section.
Right.
I'm not sure that two hundred and fifty feet makes that much difference.
No, I was going to say, just a little, is there a reason why we just take?
The state says seven fifty.
Right.
No, no.
But wait, there's more. As Holly comes back for her third trip.
Get her exercise.
So, I want to clarify, the text of Amendment Two provides that unless allowed by local government, no new medical marijuana facilities at La Saffille or Four shall be initially sited within one thousand feet of any then-existing elementary or secondary school, child daycare center, or church. So the default set by the text of Amendment Two is a thousand feet, but it does not include parks specifically.
It doesn't include number five, that's what I'm saying. They're saying that's outside the scope of the state law.
That's what she's agreeing with you. It does not include that, we added parks.
Yeah. That's, that's the only thing that, I mean.
Well, if you don't agree with it, make a motion to amend.
I'll take a, make a motion to remove section five, number five.
Second, discussion?
I don't know how I feel about that, to be perfectly honest with you. I mean, next to a public park, a thousand feet from a public park.
I think it's reasonable.
Well, then leave public, put, then leave public park in there, and then take out all the other stuff. I mean, is that?
Joe, that doesn't, that doesn't change it. You could take out all the other stuff, but the amendment basically reads, and Holly, correct me if I'm wrong, but five is really saying a public park. It doesn't really matter, the other stuff, I mean, includes but not limited to, I mean, you could put swing set if you want to, it, it doesn't matter. But the point is, once you get past a public park, you're kind of filling.
I just, yeah.
So if the, if the objection is to allow a whatever facility within a thousand feet of a public park, I, I don't know that I'm good with that.
The only thing that I will say, I think that this would be challenged, and I think we'll lose, because it's, it's outside the scope of the state law. Would you, is that a concern that we may, that we're wasting our time putting stuff in that's not what the people passed, what the state passed?
I think that Amendment Two provides that we can, that a local government can impose reasonable restrictions that are related to the time, place, or manner of this. And so I think that public parks would be within the same reasons that schools or daycare centers might be. centers might be, there might be a limitation there. And so, I think that a local government could very reasonably decide to include public parks within there.
There's, at least from what Jennifer said, there's at least two others of municipalities in this county that have included parks in theirs. So, it's not like we're the only ones. I mean, if you're within those two municipalities, they've already included similar language that says a public park does not allow a facility within 1,000 feet.
From a policy and maybe a legal question standpoint, I think the place where I, you might draw a line in terms of how, what do I divide this question into two separate components would be related to the Great Rivers Greenway Trails, which right now in our county go along Highway 370 and go along Highway 364. So, at that point, you've excluded any highway frontage in 370 along industrial parks. 364 is obviously more residential on both sides where the trail segment goes, but that's different from, you know, Oday Park in the city of O'Fallon, or even the Katy Trail being just along the river. You're not developing quite as much within that 1,000 feet there, but otherwise you're going straight along highways to say that you would not be able to have this kind of development.
That's my point. I think we're putting a restriction on here with the Katy Trail all the way up like in Mike's district, along the Katy Trail and industrial, that's industrial area down there too, and so you're going to eliminate all of that, them spots. I think we're making a zoning restriction that we're not even know how broad it is, how far-reaching it is. I'm, I'm, we got, we got...
I understand your concern for those people that may be injured by this, but why aren't those people here?
They are there.
I am. You're one person.
No, but they just, yeah.
One person.
The place you want to go is next to a park?
No, it's next to a trail, which my interpretation was any trail.
No, sir. I think we have a clarification tonight that says the trail does not matter, according to our attorney.
Mike, that's not what Jennifer just told us though.
I don't see how you would say the Great Rivers Greenway, which is a metropolitan parks and recreation district operating a linear park system, wouldn't fall within that category. I think what Holly was kind of highlighting is there are a lot of subdivisions that we have in St. Charles County, who as part of the development have put walking trails in and through the subdivision. That would not qualify, but I, I think Great Rivers Greenway District Park Trails would qualify.
Here's where I would meet you with this, Mr. Brazel. If, if your amendment would be to remove the, the phrase "nature trail" or "trail" even...
Bicycle, bicycle path.
It is not next to a bicycle path.
No, but just broaden it to the, to the trail system.
If you make it trail to use Jennifer's definition, I mean, what are you going to define as a trail? Does it have an actual name or what?
If I can speak for Jennifer is that the Great Rivers Network, Greenway, whatever they call this, Great Rivers Greenway, I always get it wrong, is in fact a park.
It is a park.
So, unless we change the complete definition of what a park is, we, it would, it would fail on the very first line. It's a park. Forget about all the description of what a park is.
Can I ask the gentleman, what, what trail were you...
There's actually a trail that is actually Highway 79, runs over Salt River Road, runs back on up and all that flood playground, and then comes down to St. Charles and hits the Katy Trail. That is the one that really misses me over. And it's, it's a highway.
Fusher, right.
It's not maintained as a trail, it's the shoulder of the road.
Yeah, right, right here at Little Hills Expressway, the Melwether Parkway, all that would be within a fifth of a mile, 1,000 feet from one of the trails that is a park. So, that would eliminate highway frontage, the part that would make the most sense for some of these dispensaries to be in.
We do have a motion on number five, just removing it, and the motion's on the floor. If you guys are done with the conversation, unless, because it just, I don't know, John? Go ahead. I'm sorry.
If there's no other discussion, we just call the question and vote it up or down.
I, I think Joe might actually have a point on this one.
Oh.
I know.
It was, it was hard to come by.
It was hard, but, you know.
Well, then, all those favor of removing this, say aye.
Aye.
And those oppose, okay, it's, it's removed. Now, we go on to the bill itself. Any other discussion on the bill itself with the amended portion, with the amended bill?
I think you just count what you wanted.
No, I got another issue.
Oh, trouble going to the well twice.
Well...
I'd invite him to come up, John.
Okay, you want to discuss your problem?
I am, as you can tell, also applying for groves and dispensaries and extract companies. And it takes months and months to, to get a piece of property that fell into the state requirements that were given to us at the time. The residential 2,000 feet from property line to property line, you have to have a, well, I'm not sure I can find a piece of property that falls in that category because if this person has 1,000 acres and I have 1,000 acres, and I'm going to build in the middle of it, it's still property line to property line. He might not have a house for a quarter of a mile over there, but it's still property line to property line. So, that kicks out three of my pieces of real estate that I have applied for on the application. And it's not just applying for application. The applications are specific for that piece of property. So, I've just worked four months and spent a lot of money on something that I can't use now.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, though, the state had already said 750.
Correct.
So, you purchased this property with, with the assumption that it was going to be 750 and not 1,000?
Correct. No, it's 2,000 now.
2,000.
2,000.
Yeah, yeah. And it used to be, I believe, door to door, if I remember right. I might be wrong on that, but I believe it was front door to front door, and now it's property line to property line, which to me doesn't even make any sense.
That's for a...
Grow.
Grow.
Yeah.
Let me ask you this. How do you think people are going to grow this? They're not going to just go out and plant a couple acres.
No, indoor. Indoor, 100% indoor. You got scrubbers, you got carbon filters, you got, you know, LED lighting. I mean, it's a, it's a big major, major deal. It's...
I think the perspective though, from my, I represent rural area, I know Mike does and Joe does, but the perspective from our position was it's like pot in an industrial building in the middle of agriculture area. Now, is our, is our restrictions too restrictive? I don't know, but that was the way the conversation was because if you got a nice piece of farm ground out there and you got a, then you're going to put a barbed wire fence up, right? You got to have a barbed wire fence, you got to have high security, have all these lights.
Cameras, no lights, cameras. You can have lights around your structure itself, but if you have a big piece of property, who's it going to bother?
Well, it's one, well, it's, it's one thing about doing it close to industrial parts and commercial parts, but when you, I mean, in my view, I don't, I don't know. I don't know. It's your guys' conversation too, but...
I'm comfortable with the 2,000. I, I think that the grow aspect, I...
It's going to smell too. That's another thing.
Actually, a lot of the rules says it can't smell, so...
Well, if they planted outside, it could smell. I mean, you can't scrub the outside.
Actually, the rules say that it still can't smell even if it's in a greenhouse or outside, which isn't possible, but...
Well, and I think what we found out before in earlier discussions is with our climate, you're not going to be able to grow outside. You're going to have to do this inside a controlled environment because there's only certain times of the year that you would actually be able to do this.
I thought that also until I found out in the state of Washington, they grow outside. And I can't, I mean, they, they get snow, they get weather, they get everything that we get also. Don't get the blistering heat, I guess, but marijuana, probably like that.
Well, it says you can't smell it past the property line. If you have 10,000 acres, you could probably get away with it.
I'm not, I, I don't, I think that we would be asking for problems on that.
Personally, I think we're being far too restrictive, but that's, that's me and, and...
Well, I've just spent five months procuring and securing some properties that are specific for the application, which turns in a week that I've just wasted my time on, so...
So, if you go with, if it's 1,000 feet times 1,000 feet is, that is, that's 100,000 square feet, so that's 44,000 an acre. That's about three, that's about three acres, right? 100,000 square feet. So, if you're going six acres, I, I'm not so sure 2,000 feet's that far because if you got six acres, then you'd get, if you had, if you had 50 acres, you, in the center of it, you'd be over, well, well over 2,000 feet away.
Well, I have 19 acres...
Depends on the configuration. It could be a real narrow strip that's eight miles long.
I have 19 acres, which is rectangle, and if you go from center of my building to property line, or center of my building to the front door of a house, the only one resident in the area, 2,000 feet will definitely kick me out of the picture.
Yeah, I, I don't see the, I don't see the problem with the 2,000 feet being from your facility to the front door of the next closest home.
That's definitely more reasonable.
You know, 2,000 feet to me to a property line is, that, that opens up, I mean, like you say, sometimes it'd be, you could have a...
You're saying 2,000 feet to the door.
To the, to the next closest residence or door.
Let's, let's think about that for a second though, because if there's a plot of ground that's already been then designated residential, even though the houses aren't built yet, what, what we would be doing is allowing houses within to be built, you're infringing on what the neighbor can do on his property. If we're saying that, that if, if it's not to the property line, if it's to the front door, it doesn't allow the neighbor to, to turn into a subdivision.
As long as they're doing it at truth fact and they know it's there, they should be able to do anything they want.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's the problem you're, the people you're trying to protect are the people that already live there. And if, if there's no odor leaving the, the property lines, basically, one of the buildings I'm looking at is a writing facility, and I'm just going to convert it over to an indoor grow. So, the building itself's not changing, the land's not changing. It's very, very restrictive and controlled medical facility.
Can I ask Holly to come back up for a moment?
Sorry. I think the county executive...
We're tennis shoes next time.
I know.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Did you have a question, Mr. Elman?
Well, I just, maybe Holly knows. I was told by one of the council people in St. Louis County that the city of St. Louis has zero setbacks on everything.
On grow facilities?
Growing. Is that, do you know, have you looked at it?
I don't know offhand.
Dispensaries, I mean, they, they have zero. So, my guess is a whole bunch of these things are going to go in the city, not, not out here in the first place. So, I, I don't know. Maybe the person who... Huh? I think St. Louis County, wasn't St. Louis County talking about doing 1,000? St. Louis County was talking about doing 1,000. Well, I, you know, to me, if you're talking about odor, the, whatever the length is, it needs to be from the source of the odor, not the property line. You, you can, you know, have it on one part of your property and, and it's, you know, you, you might be able to have it right, right next to the property line on this side, but, you know, you're closer to the property line over here. I mean, I think it's like the noise. Remember we do the noise stuff? And, and in the past, we did it from the property line, which to me didn't make any sense, and you all then changed it. I think the noise ordinance talks about distance from the source of the noise. So, is, is that the way we have it now, or is it still, the property line doesn't seem to, doesn't seem to be a rational basis for an odor, an odor ordinance?
And just so you guys know, they're only allowing so many grows per district. It's split up that way. So, everybody just can't move to the city per district. I think eight or nine per district.
I would just clarify a couple of things. First, the odor is a separate issue, and regardless of if you allow, you know, cultivation facility right next to a whole subdivision, the ordinance still provides that the smells coming from their property cannot go to any other property, whether it's, you know, five feet away or 5,000 feet away. So, the smell is sort of a different issue, and in theory at least, though you've raised some questions about practically, in theory at least, regardless of what number you set, smell should not be an issue. The text of amendment two provides the default of 1,000 feet for the elementary or secondary school, child daycare center, or church. The text of amendment two, what was voted, passed by the voters, doesn't refer to residential areas at all. I'm trying to flip through quickly to look at the regulations, but my recollection is that it doesn't deal with those residential areas. So, it's just the, the default of the 1,000 feet is for the then existing elementary or secondary school, child daycare center, or church.
Well, I, you think 1,000, or, I'm sorry, 2,000 feet from, from door to facility is, is, you think that's too much?
I think 1,000 feet from the property line is, is adequate.
Well, then, make the motion. It's on number C, number two, on page 48.
Make a motion when you reduced it to 1,000 feet to the property line.
I guess I'll second it. Oops.
Discussion on, discussion on the motion?
All my thoughts.
No, it's Jimmy Buffett, sorry.
No, I, I don't, I don't have any problem with that. You know, I, you know, again, 2,000 feet, I think this is just extremely restrictive, you know, if you're going to go to the property line, okay? But 1,000 feet, I think I can, I can, I can see that, you know.
Can I recommend we go from front door to front door, which is the property line?
Can I ask Mike Kerlberg to come up and weigh in on this real quick? We have one person who writes it, one person who enforces it, so...
This measurement thing's important for me.
That's kind of...
So, yeah, the, typically, so the cities all do it a little bit different. The city of, I think it's Lake St. Louis has the exact same, wait, or no, I'm sorry, Wintville has the exact same way we're, we're talking about doing it, property line to property line, and if it's in a freestanding, freestanding facility. If it's in a strip center or part of a larger building, then it's the front door of that building to the property line of the use, the adjacent use. So, that, that's important in how that we distinguish that. City of St. Charles does it from the facility, so that corner of that building closest to the property line of that use. So, that residential use or whatever it is, is from the facility to the property line. It does not, we do not get in, or most, I've not seen one that gets into measuring to the other building, the house, or whatever that other use is. It's always typically the property line of that adjoining use. That way, you have a clear line, clear way to measure that.
So, 1,000 feet to the property line?
From the facility to the property line.
Yeah, that's, that's what we need to clarify.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not here to cater to anybody's needs, but I think 2,000 feet to the property line is, is extremely excessive, and I would make a motion to change it. Well, I made a motion to the 1,000 feet.
1,000 feet to the property line?
To the property.
All right, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, those oppose?
Yes.
Then it has been changed to 1,000 feet. Okay, now we'll go back and discuss the amended bill again. Now, is there any discussion on the amended bill? Any more discussion? Seeing none, then we call for...
Hang on just a second. Do we have a point of clarification from the adjournment?
The ordinance, oh, you go ahead. The ordinance has the definition of how we measure, and so it sounds like you may have slightly tweaked that within this portion of the measurement for ag district.
Can you tell us again, what's the ordinance say?
A medical marijuana cultivation facility located in an A agricultural district shall not be operated within 2,000 feet, or if amended, 1,000 feet, as measured by subsection E2 of the following: any residential zoning district as defined in the UDO to the property line of a lot devoted to a residential use as defined in the UDO.
That's a lot to absorb.
So, we're talking about the distance between a cultivation facility and either a residentially zoned parcel or any lot devoted to a residential use. So, that could be in an A or another, another district.
So, if it's not a residential use, it doesn't even apply?
So, it's agriculture, it doesn't apply?
So, this is, correct. So, this is any medical marijuana cultivation facility located in an A agricultural district. in an A agricultural district. And the cultivation facilities are allowed in A by conditional use permit. You may know those offhand better than I do.
So the concern on, what did we change if we adopt this? What are we changing in terms of measurement?
I just wanted, yeah, I just wanted to make sure we weren't changing the, trying to change the measurement that we define all the other uses by, which is property line to property line.
Isn't that what we wondered?
Yeah, we just went.
I think we just went from 2,000 to 1,000.
I thought I heard facility to property line, so that's why I wanted to make sure. Okay, all right.
What's facility to property line?
It's facility to property, I don't know what, when you say property line to property line.
That doesn't make sense?
That makes no sense. The line is the line between two properties, so.
That's, that's how it was defined.
I think it would be saying that.
All right, wait a minute, I got a box here, and I got a spot right in the middle of it. That's the facility, a thousand feet to the property line.
Yes.
They're not always going to be immediately adjacent.
Okay, but the line still would traverse other agricultural zone property?
But that may not be being used as a residential.
Right.
Property. So you could have A cultivation facility, and then agriculture, agriculture with no residential, and then an agriculturally zoned home, and so it would be measuring the, the distance from the property line to the property line. So if you all are looking at how that's measured.
It should be that way.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
If you all are looking at how that's measured, then that is on page forty-nine, discussing that it's, that the distance between the facility and the residentially zoned district or agricultural use is measured from the property line of the facility to the closest point of the property line of that residential use.
Does that make sense?
The property line of the facility, to me, that should say the building line, not the property line.
The facility, the facility that's being built, that's providing the cultivation, should be a thousand feet from the next person's property line.
Residential property line.
Or residential, but remember, it goes to CUP, so you got to go through this anyway. You can make adjustments, but just for the applicant to understand, it's a thousand feet from the property line to the facility. You build your facility 1,000 feet from the property line.
I don't think that's true, on how we're reading this.
Should be the building line.
That's not, that's not what I'm hearing you say.
The way that it's written, drafted right now, is 1,000 feet from the facility's property line to the residential use property line.
The nearest point.
That means that you got a big gap in the middle, don't you?
Well, in theory, you could have a property line and a property line right next to each other. So you could build the building here on your 19 acres, and then you could have a residential right next to it, which means, that's a, that's a property line.
Yeah.
Like you're, you could have a thousand feet from your building to your neighbor's property line, but that, that clock doesn't start in terms of measurement until you get to that person's 19 acre property line closest to the residential zone area. Am I hearing you correctly?
It should be the building line, not the property.
That pushes it even farther out there, doesn't it?
I wouldn't even say building line, I'd say facility.
Facility, that's fine. The facility itself is.
Again, that, the city of St. Charles, their definition of how they, they measure is from the facility to the property line of that, but whatever.
So what was our amendment?
We don't need a thousand foot buffer going all the way around a, as a, as another perimeter around.
We're not just changing 2,000 to 1,000, but we didn't change the property line measurement, which it sounds like from talking about this, we have a very confused definition of what we thought we were measuring.
Okay, so we.
I don't think so.
Well, that's, you did this for thirty years.
If there's somebody that's got a house on a property next to this facility, the facility has to be a thousand feet away from the property line.
That's not what it says right now, though.
It's not what it says.
That is not what this says. You have to be a thousand, your, your house has to be a thousand feet away from the property line of the, where the facility is located. So if the facility is located in the middle of a 20 acre tract, and you're a mile, your house is a mile away, but it's only a thousand feet away from the property line, you, they wouldn't build a bill. And that's not our intention at all.
So how do you recognize?
It should be a facility.
So. In E2, which is on page forty-nine, if you removed the words "the property line of the."
Yes.
Then it would say, "The distance between the facility and the property listed in subsection C, which is the residential, shall be measured from the facility to the closest point of the property line of the property listed in subsection C."
Is that the way you want to change your motion, your amendment?
Yes.
I think so, Dave, that's, that's, yeah, that would be yes, right?
And then to add one more potential wrinkle, so right now we're talking about, right now we're talking about the distance between the residential and the cultivation facility, and then in the section previous, the same measurement is happening for any of those same. Things we were talking about before. So for churches, schools, any of that stuff, that is also property line to property line.
So that means adjoining property lines.
For freestanding facilities.
Yes.
Well, I, I would like to make a suggestion. I suggest that we go ahead, table this the next meeting. I think you know what we're trying to accomplish. So if we can get that, some kind of amendment to, to, to address the concern that we brought up with, with the, the last amendment we made.
I think to fix the residential issue, you would just remove the words "property line of the," and that fixes it. So it would be measuring the facility to the residential property line.
And what section is that?
That is in.
What page?
Are you talking about section two, page forty-nine, that you were just reading?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's in section 405 dot 5072, and so 405, 5072, E2A, to give chapter and verse.
So I make a motion to remove the words "of the."
Property line of the.
The property line of the, from that section, 2A.
Okay, before we do that.
On page forty-nine.
We've already passed an amendment, so how.
Two amendments, as a matter of fact.
But we voted, okay?
And those are okay.
No.
Okay, okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Well, I believe we have a motion and a second on the floor that we have not voted on.
We need to do away with the first.
No, we voted on it already.
Did we vote to approve that? Okay.
We removed number five, that's the only one we.
And then the 2,000 one.
Yeah, we haven't voted on the 2,000.
Just if it's here.
Yeah, we voted on that.
For the schools.
I thought we were, I thought that was discussion, I thought that was agreement upon a, a, agreeing to hear the amendment. I didn't know we were voting to actually approve, like Terry did. I thought we.
Now we're, now we're up to redefining what, what it measures.
How many more bills do we have here?
Oh, we only have two more.
I was gonna say, we could have, just sit down, have the lawyers go ahead and actually write the amendment.
Okay, all right.
Makes sense?
Well, but.
Yeah, they, they do it now.
I understand, but for a point of clarification, before you go sit and write, and just to make sure the council's all on the same page, because I, I just feel like we're not right now, but I want to make sure.
Need a picture.
What, just play around with me, okay? I'm slow, I'm from Arkansas, and I was back there all weekend, so who knows how slow I am right now. The way I'm understanding that what we're trying to accomplish is, we want to go from the facility. To the property line.
Correct.
And we want to make it a thousand feet.
Correct.
Am I correct on that?
As way I understand it.
In all measurements that we have sourced in this bill, we want our measurement to be from the facility to the property line. Correct? That includes the other parts that we have measurements in here, because we're all measured the same way right now, to Mike's point. We weren't just changing that section, then we'd be measuring this growing differently than we would be measuring all the other facilities. Our, our measurement process would be different, because they're all written property line to property line, so all measurements have to be rewritten to go from facility to property line. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that.
Would you agree, Holly?
I do. I think, I am happy to state what I think those amendments would be, or can also draft that and write it. I think we'll need to change it in only two places, in E1A and in 2A.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm coming.
Could I just request to have Donna, what her notes reflect, what amendments have been adopted to substitute at this point?
To remove section five, that Councilman Brazel asked for, and to change the 2,000 to the 1,000, and Councilman Klinghammer opposed, and now we're on this discussion.
Very good.
She's on it, isn't she? Bam!
Not her first rodeo.
Okay, so how do we move forward then?
And I, I think we table this until they come back, is that correct?
That's what he's asking for.
Motion to table 4743, substitute bill.
Second.
Don't we already have a motion on the floor?
No, we're just.
Yeah, we have one on the floor.
Motion to remove the last motion.
That Dave needs to do it.
I, I, I'll remove my motion.
Okay.
Tell, just until it gets in written form, so.
Okay, then, is there a motion to table this until such time as?
I think we just did that.
Yeah, motion to table 4743.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion carries, table. Okay, we'll move on to bill number 4744.
Bill number 4744, an ordinance amending sections 230.010 and 230.030, ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSC CMO, relating to food code fees for permits and inspections.
Any questions or comments on bill 4744?
Can we ask Holly to, no, I'm just kidding.
Seeing none?
Bill number 4744, an ordinance amending sections 230.010 and 230.030, ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSC CMO, relating to food code fees for permits and inspections. Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin, Councilman Brazel, Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Bill 4744 has been passed, and we'll move on to bill 4745.
Bill number 4745, an ordinance amending the 2019 budget for positions within the St. Charles County Police Department Bureau of Administrative Services to add a school resource officer for a new school in the Francis House School District.
Any questions or comments on bill 4745? Seeing none? Read the title and call a roll.
Bill number 4745, an ordinance amending the 2019 budget for positions within the St. Charles County Police Department Bureau of Administrative Services to add a school resource officer for a new school in the Francis House School District. Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin, Councilman Brazel. Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes. Bill number 4745 has been passed, and we'll move on to bills for introduction, beginning with 4746.
Bill number 4746, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designee to execute intergovernmental agreements with political subdivisions within St. Charles County to establish property tax reimbursement rates for projects within St. Charles County.
Any question, any questions or comments on bill number 4746? Seeing none? Then that concludes bills for introduction, and there's nothing to be removed from the table, so we'll be just waiting a few moments for the amendment version to come forward.
You can do announcements?
We voted on 4746.
That's introduction.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, we can do an announcement.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
Do you have an announcement, Mike? Well.
Can you fill, somebody fill?
I, I have an announcement. So our St. Charles County workforce and business development is always busy, trying to help people find a job. Scott, I think we're at, what, 2.3% unemployment?
It's gone up just a little bit, but it's still low, low, low.
We're right there. So, since we have time to fill, funny little comparison story. So, my sister's family, they live in El Centro, California. So my nephew is 26 years old, and it's really hard to find a job in El Centro, California. They have an unemployment rate of 24%. How about that? So they were here for my son's wedding. Thank you, it went really well, I appreciate you all asking. They all said I do at the appropriate time, we signed the license there in Cancun. So, he was going around, and he can't believe that everyone in St. Charles County has a now hiring sign that's up and about. And he was amazed by the fact that in El Centro, they fight to pay you minimum wage. Like, they do not pay you a dime more if they can get away from it. And he was amazed, when we went to Target, that Target was starting at $13 an hour to work at Target. And he's thinking, I need to move to St. Charles County.
Get out of California.
And I said, you know, those rental trucks are expensive leaning, leaving California, but they're cheap to drive back in. But just wanted to point out that there is a pop-up job center that is going on at St. Jokum and Ann Care Center Food Pantry, which is on McClay Road. This is Thursday, August 1st, from 4 to 7. Scott, we've got some time, do you want to talk about what the pop-up job center is?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that.
While Holly is feverishly running up and down the stairs?
Well, in light of tonight's discussion, we are following the Doobie Brothers and going to take it to the streets.
Hey!
So the.
It's medical marijuana, that's, you look at you covering all the bases.
I didn't say that, but you did. Literally, what we're trying to do is get the job center out where the people are at. So we're working very hard with communications and others to bring people into the job center, but that's not enough. So we're going mobile, and many of the other regions around the state are doing that. Setting up a table, having some folks there willing to help with counseling, talk about career assessment, talk about the job opportunities. Our first one was this last week over at the library district. They've been very willing to work with us, and we'll be doing that at other libraries throughout the area. We've been working with St. Jokums and Ann, and we said, when is the best time? When do you have the largest group of people? And this is a specific food pantry distribution day that's really big, so we're going to be there for that. We were just at a back-to-school supply fair this last weekend on Saturday in Darden Prairie, working with people who came to that, and we've got some other ideas that are, that are going to be happening. But we're just trying to take the folks out, get them out of our building, get them to where folks are at, where there's destination points, and let them know about our services and all of the great things that are available, along with all of those jobs. So if we can get that relative of yours to move here.
Hey!
I, I wish we were at 440,000, but if we can get more of those folks here, we'll just keep climbing that number up and filling these jobs.
We're growing at 10,000 a month right now, Scott.
That's right, that's right.
So I'm just saying.
We're leaving them in the dust.
That's it.
That's right. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
Motion to adjourn. Or does somebody have it?
We're waiting.
Waiting on the table, bud. Good try, though.
I thought we were going to do it next meeting.
We're ready.
We're here for you.
I'd like to remove bill 4743 off the table, please.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, those opposed? Motion carries.
It'll, it takes a moment.
So here is amendment one that you already approved, that was removing number five. I took your second request to be in subsection C, to remove 2,000 feet and replace it with 1,000, as written. Then on page 49, would need to remove the words "property line of the," both in E1A and in E2A.
So who's going to? I'd like to make a motion to amend it, as she's pointed out. Council's pointed out.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Now we can go on to the, the bill itself as amended, bill number 4743.
As the substitute.
As substitute.
Substitute, as amended.
Substitute as amended, yes.
Substitute bill number 4743 as amended.
Substitute bill number 4743 as amended, in ordinance creating a new chapter 277 Medical Marijuana Regulations in the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, and amending certain sections of chapter 405, OSCCMO, Unified Development Ordinance of St. Charles County, Missouri, zoning regulations in order to establish medical marijuana land use and safety regulations.
Now, do we need to discuss, or do we vote on as read?
As read.
As read?
I think as read.
Okay.
Substitute bill number 4743 as amended, in ordinance creating a new chapter 277 Medical Marijuana Regulations in the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, and amending certain sections of chapter 405, OSCCMO, Unified Development Ordinance of St. Charles County, Missouri, zoning regulations in order to establish medical marijuana land[1740.36]